Jeff is coming in by Zoom as well, so he is watching and he may, he may jump in and intercede on something if he needs to. But anyway, so members of the public have started to inquire about Kenwood Cove for 2021. The 2021 season is planned for May 29th to August 15th, 2021. And the ongoing impacts of COVID may necessitate a modified plan for 2021. As you're aware, the operation of Kenwood Cove requires a significant amount of personnel, supplies, repairs, utilities and maintenance to open. Traditionally, Kenwood Cove has recovered most of its operating costs with the exception of the ongoing support from parks, facility maintenance and utilities departments personnel. As you may or may not be aware, there's a staff member from utilities that helps serve as a pool technician for six months to ensure exceptional water clarity, chemical control and smooth mechanical operation. The proposed modified plan for mass gathering and social distancing will decrease typical revenues and we will not recover our budgeted expenses. We are aware that, that the commission will be talking about this later on this afternoon, so obviously this, this may change. Staff recruitment started in January. Staffing lifeguards will continue to be a challenge for the 2021 season. On the next slide, you have our historical expenses and revenues. Does anybody have any questions or I'm sure you don't want me to read these line item by line items. So does anybody have any particular questions on our historical expenses and revenues? Yes, sir.
Just one, is there any reason that the maintenance fund is not a budgeted expense, for lack of a better term?
Well, we, we budget an allocation out of the sales tax fund on an annual basis to then fund the maintenance fund and so then we spend out of that. I'm not sure if...
So that why it doesn't notice that the expenses notes does not include the Kenwood Cove maintenance fund?
Correct. We, we draw down on that fund occasionally, not on a regular basis. In fact, the, one of the items you have on your agenda today is replacing the Diamond Bright surfacing and, and the River Walk or the Lazy River area, which will be an example of kind of a item that we've saved up in the maintenance fund for and then we'll make an expenditure on a as needed basis rather than an annual allocation.
So that's just a, and like an escrow fund for the big ticket?
Correct. Yes, sir. We don't use it for day-to-day operations.
If, if I might chime in, the maintenance fund is actually set up under a state statute that allows capital improvement funds. And you budget the transfer into that fund on an annual basis, but when you expend out of that fund, it is not necessarily, it's not a budgeted expense. So your budget transfers in and then you can, you know, after you've accumulated money for 10 years, you can spend it, but you don't have to budget that expenditure ahead of time. So that's why it's kind of...
So the difference here, it, it's just coming in from a source other than from the regular budget?
Yes.
Correct. And this notation is to call out the fact that that fund is available for individual uses.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions on the, on the, on the revenues back through 2017? Okay, so on the next slide, you'll see our normal season operating parameters, Monday through Saturday, 12:30 to seven, Sunday, 12:30 to six, and then we have our fee structure here. Any questions on, on that?
For the water walking, those people that come in, is that one of just the regular day pass fee?
They can either get a, I believe it's a 10 or 20 punch pass or a day fee.
Okay.
On the next slide, you can see comparable day pass fees of other aquatic facilities. So you notice that Rock River Rapids and Derby is $8 for youth, $9 for adults, seniors are $8. And then we go all the way down to Wichita, the College Hill Pool, which is $2, $3 and not applicable. College Hill Pool is more like a pool. It's not necessarily a water park. Just wanted to point out the different fee structures. The average day pass rates are $4.50 for youth, $5.52 for adult, $2.86 for seniors. And as you can see, we fall right about in the middle. We do think it's important to, to point out that in 2018, Kenwood Cove was named by MSN insiders the number one water park in the state of Kansas. Hopefully we can continue that tradition this summer. Comparable facilities, Manhattan, Hayes, McPherson, Hutchinson, Derby and Dodge City. They are all have different, no, no two facilities are identical, but they all have several amenities that are, that are similar. Our next slide, our normal season daily staffing levels, you can see what it takes.
Can I ask a question here, Mr. Cullen? So I'd like to assume they are making a budget with those numbers or are they subsidizing those states or aquatics facilities?
Commissioner Ryan, I apologize. We can tell you're talking, but due to sound quality on this end, we can't make out what you're saying. We're still trying to troubleshoot that.
I think he was asking if they're subsidized.
Yeah.
Whether the other pool facilities are subsidized?
Right.
Right.
Oh, I can find that out. We, we don't know what their cost recovery is, sir, but we could definitely look into that.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Okay. Next is our current lifeguard pay rate. You can see the three different tiers we have there for, for staffing. And then over to the right, you can see what the lifeguarding starting rate of pay is in other communities. And then you can also see what comparable jobs in Salina for the age range are. So you can see who our competitors are for, for staffing. So when I was coming up, you know, my career started as a lifeguard, so I loved it. But that's changed and not as many kids are willing to sit in the sun all summer for that rate of pay as they were back in, back in the day. So you can see what we're up against. Yes, sir.
Are most of our lifeguards high school students or college students or in that age group?
It's that age group. Yes, sir. We don't have a lot of what I consider adults. We have, uh, we have a lot of college kids and when they go back to school, then that really puts us in a, in a bind to continue operations.
So is this their major summer job or they, the reason I'm asking, looking at the rate of pay, it's, you know, they could probably find a job making more. Is this enough to where we get enough applicants as their major summer job that...
This has been an ongoing issue since before I was hired to come to Salina. Keeping a full staff at the water park has been a challenge every year. I can't say when it first opened and it was brand new, but I know even when I was still working in another community, I got calls from the media about staffing problems here. So it's been an ongoing issue to just to keep up with, I guess we can call it keeping up with the Joneses on the part-time pay rate.
I don't know if you can hear me, but I'm going to go ahead and, and try to ask this question. I noticed that we have the YMCA listed here. Do we have any sense of what Great Life or the Country Club is paying its lifeguards? Are we competitive with, with those wages?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can certainly research that for you.
I would just be curious. I mean, in terms, if, if the, if the supply pool is super limited, I would just want the city to be the preferred employer.
Yes, ma'am. Jeff, do you know the answer to that question? I know you're on the line.
We can make out the mayor, but we could not make out you, Jeff.
Sounded like they don't share the information.
Yeah, he said they're reluctant.
I, I would think it'd also be interesting to see what Lindesberg does because of the proximity if we were to try to entice some of those individuals to drive 15 minutes to work.
On the next slide, our 2021 lifeguard recruitment status. We currently have, as of March 10th, we have 22 lifeguards returning. We have 18 new candidates. We have five returning in maintenance, four new maintenance candidates. And then we have five cashiers returning with three new cashiers on the, on the line. And then we have lifeguard classes scheduled for March 15th, 16th and 17th. And we are teaching these classes now ourselves. Andrea Laman is our new aquatics supervisor and she's certified to teach classes. So where in the past Jeff didn't teach, he just recruited. Andrea is able to teach those classes for us now and help with that recruitment effort. Next is our historical total payroll breakdown. As you can see, our 2019 expense, our total payroll budget was budgeted for $277,000. Our actual payroll spent was $229,476 for a variance of $47,523.64. And then we have the historical payroll expense, but our averages, our average budget is $294,667. Our average regular pay has been $238,456 with overtime pay of $9,613. One of the reasons, I know we've been asked this in the past, one of the reasons we haven't spent all of our allotted budget is we just haven't had enough people to spend it all, plain and simple. We just haven't had the bodies. Any questions on that?
Is that what you're saying? That's the reason for overtime is from the lack of?
Yes, sir.
Full-time staff, okay.
Not just that, not just the going over on the overtime, but also not spending all of our historical regular pay because we haven't had, haven't had the bodies there. Mayor Hodges, were you, were you saying something, ma'am?
Yes, I just had a question. So is the $2.65 that's budgeted for this year, is that just plugging in our new hourly ranges into what we've typically done in the past or does this reflect the, the shifts that you have proposed in 2021?
Operating model?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. Were you asking if the $2.65 is budgeted for normal wages?
Yeah, I wanted to know first, does that reflect the, what are we doing, a wage increase for the, the lifeguards this year? What did I miss out?
It does. The, the, yes, ma'am. The payroll budget is for, is for $2.65. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so does that reflect what 2018 and 2019 staffing schedules or does it reflect the 2021 staffing shifts that you're proposing we adopt? I don't know if I asked that.
No, I think, I, I think I understand what you're, what you're asking, ma'am. Let me, let me turn that one question over to Jeff because I know Jeff crunched these numbers for the PowerPoint. He worked pretty hard on this. Jeff, do you have that off the top of your head?
$2.65 that I was budgeting, it was scheduled to be paid in 2020.
Right.
So we cover, I think it's an increase, we're talking about a 25% increase in 2020. Or is that a schedule paid in 2020? So we feel comfortable being able to cover that budgeting to cover all of our payroll for this year. It's not changed based on what we're proposing today.
I, I think it does, Jeff. And so basically this $2.65 number is just, it pretty much, it aligns with what we've done in past years, but it doesn't necessarily reflect this year's operating model. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
And for what it's worth, this, this operating model was developed after the budget was set. And as we are going into this year, recognizing we may still be in for impacts of the pandemic.
Okay, on the next, next slide, we have our average attendance, day passes and memberships. Our operating days, total attendance down over the years. As you noticed, 2014, we had over 81,000 people visit and that number fell down to 2019 by about 10,000 people. So part of that can be attributed to the staffing issue with us not being able to open some amenities. People went elsewhere. Any questions on, on that?
I would suggest probably the first year or two, there was a novelty feature also. It was new. People wanted to go there. And we probably had, the first two years were probably a little bit higher than we should expect on a regular basis.
And one of the things, one of the attractions that wasn't working when I first came to town was, we know, I don't know if you're familiar. We had the river slide wasn't functioning properly. About two years ago, that was rebuilt and now it does operate. However, like most, most attractions, in the, in the future, we will need to refreshen, freshen the water park, maybe add a new feature at some point in time to help bring those people back.
And you might also speak to the, what the staffing did to us in terms of having to close portions of the pool and then the frustration that created for some of our patrons.
Correct. So as I've mentioned, the last couple of summers, we've had, had issues keeping staff on all summer. That has resulted in us needing to close. Most frequently, the lap pool was closed so that we keep the, the slides and the lazy river open. Those are our two biggest attractions. However, not having lap pool open did cause some discontent and, and some people didn't come. Hopefully we can address that this year and keep everything open. Proposed operation plan for 2021. Everybody's aware of the public health order, so I know that again, I mentioned this earlier. I know that this is going to be on the agenda for later discussion today. And I'm sure that after today's meeting, we might have some different direction on, on this. So I don't, I'm not going to read that. Does anybody have any questions on that? We are planning to limit Kenwood Cove operation by two sessions, three-hour blocks of time to help with the social distancing if we go as expect, as we have been, unless that changes again. But we would limit the occupancy to 600 per session as opposed to our normal operating, um, operation of 1,200 people. Yes, sir.
Do most people tend to stay three hours or less or are there a fair number of people who make it a all-day event?
There are a fair number of people that make it an all-day event. However, based on the, the current situation, there, it'd be very difficult for us to do that and keep things clean in between. We want some of that downtime to sanitize and clean, clean the facility.
But, okay, I was just going to ask if they wanted to stay all day, would they have to pay another?
Yes, sir. If they, we'd, we'd, we'd have everybody leave the water park and then come back in.
Yeah, and I think part of this is directed at that limited access, the limited ability to make, take use of the facility. And so trying to break it into two blocks, give everyone an opportunity to, to utilize the facility. And this format thing kind of causes a reservation system and a limitation that if you wanted to take advantage of both, you'd have to go through this process and pay both times.
So is there any thought as to what hours each session might be? In other words, you say two, three-hour blocks. Is that like from one to four and six to nine or whatever?
Actually, yes, sir. We'll, we have that scheduled in here.
Okay, oh, okay.
I'll do it in just a moment.
I'm, I'm ahead of, ahead of you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. We have had some discussion about the queue lines for the entrance, the slide tower, the diving board, all the attractions. We think it'll be relatively difficult to enforce the social distancing for all of the queue lines. We just want that to be clear upfront. We'll do our best to address that. Personally, I visited several other water parks last summer to see how they were doing things. And that was a challenge at, at all of those facilities. So even though we will do our best to address it, I just want the commission to be, to know upfront, it will be a challenge for us.
And I presume that if you're a, a patron in the water park, you're not going to be required to wear a mask.
Correct.
Because it's going to be hard to be in and out of the water and so on and...
Yes, sir. We don't want anybody with a mask on in the water.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But now that's, I think a little different from the situation you just, but if, if they're in there but not actively participate in the water, but I remember they're supposed to have their mask on.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying that's going to be pretty difficult. If you've got somebody who's standing in line for a slide and they're going to slide, it's pretty hard.
Oh, no, not, not where the standard...
Then to have a mask on in line, take it off to slide down and put it back on. Now, if they're sitting at a cabana and they're sitting there, you know, eating lunch or, or drinking soft drinks and chatting, then maybe they, they should have a mask on, but if they're actively participating, it's going to be hard to require them to...
Yes.
In, in the non-aquatic areas.
Right, in non-aquatic areas. We do think that as it gets to be the hotter months of the summer, heat index well over 100, 115 degrees, it's going to become very difficult for people to breathe in a mask. We anticipate it being an issue, although we will do our best to enforce it. All staff would wear masks unless actively lifeguarding a zone of responsibility. Lifeguard chairs and stations be marked with a six feet of distance. Staff will be provided masks. Leadership staff would actively enforce mask requirement and remove patrons for non-compliance. The number of staff required to operate a given feature or a program will not change. The number of staff required to operate a given feature or a program will not change. Next, next slide, Jacob, sorry. Number of staff would be slightly reduced to fit the modified schedule. Offering water walking with the modified schedule and swim lessons with a reduced class size. Now, here's the, the thing that I, I do want, want you guys to pay attention to. Our plan, because of the reduced availability of the pools, in other words, because we're breaking it into sessions, we would propose reducing the day pass fee to $3 per person for the ease of contactless online transactions. If you want us to charge the full rate, we can certainly do that. But given that they're only there for three hours instead of all day like normal, we don't believe that charging more than $3 is, is, is adequate. Groups of 10 passes would be pre-sold using our online registration system. Seasoned pass memberships would always be given first admittance. Pass would load onto a key tag to use to enter the water park, which are scanned upon entry. Not occupancy will be monitored by software, which counts all patrons entering the park to ensure compliance. On the next slide, Jeff was able to talk to two of the, the other, some of our neighbors about kind of what they did in 2020, what they're planning on doing for 2021. As you can see, in 2020, McPherson did sessions, reduced occupancy, started at 160, ended at 320. After they closed for the midday, patronage reduced significantly for the afternoon session. For the 2021 season, they're not going to do any sessions. They're going to offer a 30-minute break in between for cleaning and disinfection, but no reduction in their max occupancy. And then Hutch, they are going to reduce occupancy. They are going to have mask guidelines. They averaged 762 patrons a day last year. As you can see, their most controversial item was not allowing guests to move chairs. They kept them strictly in pairs of two. We do have guests that move chairs all over our water park. So that is something that we will also try to enforce if, if we need to, but it, it's exceedingly difficult. And then for 2021, it depends on their county's upcoming decision. There are expectations of mask wearing and social distancing. And then they had three staff quarantined due to exposure outside the facility for COVID last year. Our morning operation plans. We would continue to offer morning water walking, lap swim and swim lessons between 9:00 AM and 10:30 AM. Learn to swim is Monday through Thursday, three sessions offered throughout the summer. Water walking would be Monday through Friday. Lifeguard staff would still watch over swim lesson participants and water walking participants, as is our norm. And these are our traditional staff, staffing levels for morning and evening programming. It's not a modification to our staffing plan. If we're open, we still need to have the guards in place to watch the water for safety. The early afternoon operations plan. From 12 to 3, we would have the slides available, the lazy river wave pool, the lily pad walk, the river slide. The lap pool, kiddie pool and kiddie slide would be unavailable through this model. Late afternoon operations would be 4 to 7 PM. The lap pool, lazy river wave pool, kiddie pool, kiddie slide would be available. The large slides, the lily pad walk and the river slide would be unavailable with this staffing model. Evening operations plan. Water walking, swim lessons from 7:15 to 8:15 PM. Water walking continues to be, learn to swim is Monday through Thursday, water walking Monday through Friday. And then the next slide is our learn to swim and walk.
Quick question, the?
Yes, sir.
The operating plan for the different amenities being open in the first session versus the second? Is that because of staffing or what's the reason for that?
Staffing, yes, sir.
So just to follow up on that, on Commissioner Hoppeck's question. During normal times, when we haven't broken it into sessions, are all those amenities open at the same time and available for patrons?
Yes, ma'am, with the exception of the lap pool, which, as I mentioned earlier, we've had to close because of staff, of low staffing numbers. But yes, ma'am, traditionally, everything, in a perfect world, everything would be open all the time.
Okay, and so the reason that all of them would not be open during both sessions is because we don't have enough lifeguard staff?
Staffing concerns and trying to keep things clean and picked up.
As well as occupancy limitations.
Right, we, we're only allowing 600 people in, in the facility at a time.
So Chris or Jeff are welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but this model was prepared in anticipation of still being under a mass gathering health order with occupancy limits. It's not driven by staffing concerns, it's driven by occupancy limit concerns and how we come up with some modified operation on the assumption that we're still under a health order. And that very well could not be the case, or it could be a changed scenario by the time that we get there. But we were getting enough inquiries about whether we had a plan for the pool and whether the pool was going to open this summer that we felt like we, we needed, number one, advertise for lifeguards, but then also share with you kind of the thought process, given what we know at the present time.
Do, do we have an alternative plan? Because I would expect the mass gathering to be significantly different at the end of May than it is now.
Right, if, if the mass gathering limits are, you know, relaxed, I think we've got an opportunity to try to transition to something that feels more normal.
Are we staffing enough to do that if, I mean, anticipation of the mass gathering?
We are trying to recruit our normal staffing levels. If, if the ma, I mean, our preference obviously would be to run the water park as we've always run it and as, as it should be run. Like, like Mike said, this is just a hybrid model so that we can actually open this year. If the mass gathering limits go away, then we can be, we would be prepared to run at whatever direction we're given, but we would like to run it as normally as possible.
Could I go back then to Commissioner Hoppeck's question? Is, is this plan based on staffing or mass limitation?
Both. This plan assumes full staffing, but the mass limitation is the, the limiting factor.
So our full staffing would normally allow us to have all seven of these amenities open all day?
Yes, sir, and part of this plan would be as, let's say the, let's say the slide towers are closed and the, and the, and the lap pool is open. Then staff that would, for fully staff, staff that would normally be running those features would also help clean the other features so that we could, well, sterilize them and clean them because they need to be, that needs to be done.
So is the only drain on the staff then for the cleaning in between?
From normal staffing, yes, sir.
To keep, that prevents us from having all seven open all?
Well, but we also have to?
Maybe if, if the, if the occupancy was not an issue?
If the occupancy was not an issue, if we were allowed to run as normal capacity and full staffing was in effect, then we would run the water park as it should be run. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so now with the occupancy limits and the need to clean, is that much staff time being diverted from managing the amenities and shifted to cleaning that we don't have enough staff left over to? Even if you put the hour break in, let's say everybody shuts down for an hour, you can't get in the water, sit in your seat. We have to clean stuff.
If we were high, if we had our full staffing complement that we're budgeted for, then there's a good chance that we could do both as you're, as I think is where you're going. But based on our historical, our historical staffing models and what we actually have, in this situation, we don't want to overpromise and under-deliver. So we definitely don't want to run into a situation like we ran into last summer where the, where the lap pool was closed most of the summer because we didn't have the staffing.
I guess I just got one kind of follow-up question to Commissioner Davis's question. And that would be, is it best to use less of our lifeguard staff to be working on cleaning and disinfecting? I mean, but I would have to go to personal matters that were available. You know, like with McPherson, they stayed open, but they took a break to do the, the cleaning and? I just, I, I'm just thinking, it's, it's an awfully hard sell to have half of our features unavailable during a given session. And so I guess my question is, could we not, if the software cracks the number of, of people that have entered the pool, could we not then cut that off at around 600? And then more people are admitted as guests depart? And we figure out, you know, some way that, you know, like, okay, the snack bar is going to be on its?
Hourly cleaning session now, make an announcement that the snack bar is not going to be available. Do that, and then we could do that through different areas, but you're not closing something down all the way and having it unavailable. I'm just throwing that out because this looks like a really complicated thing to put together.
It, it is complicated and, and Jeff spent a lot of time on this. Obviously, this is just a scenario. We can run the water park in any way we're given direction to run it. We just wanted to have an option so that we could open with COVID in place.
Thank you.
So is this plan based on 50% occupancy then?
Yes, sir.
I need to ask this next question out of ignorance. Do folks who would tend to use the kiddie pool and kiddie slide not come in the mornings and are more likely to show up from 4 to 7 PM? Because I noticed the?
Usually that's parents bringing their, their little ones in. So that's just kind of when we broke it down. I mean, people use that feature all day in their traditional model.
Okay, there's one, let me see. I'm just, again, I'm asking out of ignorance.
Absolutely.
Things that would not be available from 4 to 7 PM, the large slides, the river slide. I must admit, I don't remember what the lily pad walk is like. I don't know whether that's grown up for kids, but?
It's over on the, on the kiddie section. I believe it's four or five lily pads. It's just like an obstacle course, has a cargo net over the top and you go hand by hand over and try to stay on it.
Okay, so I'm just thinking of an older person coming. So the ones, the large slides and river slide, those are more older people?
Those are 48 inches and above.
And would those folks be more likely to come when they get out of school or after work from 4 to 7?
We have, we have, honestly, on a given day, we have adults, adults in that age group all day long. So to answer your question, I think they would come in the mornings or they'd come when the slides are open. And I think that crowd would dissipate when the, when the, when those features were closed.
Yeah, and?
Jeff, I know we had some conversations and you had some personal observations that factored into kind of how this was broken out. Do you have any thing, any, can you shed any additional light on the thinking?
My thinking was that the majority of young people between six and 15 were coming in the morning. And the parents were coming in the afternoon with their smaller children. And that's why the kiddie pool was in the afternoon, the kiddie slide was in the afternoon. And the more thrilling features, slides, the rivers, the, the river slide were open in the morning. And that's why we kind of laid it out that way. We had considerable discussion about what was the best in it, that was the one that worked out the best. Like Chris said previously, ideally, we would have everything available at all times. But if we're trying to make it equally available throughout the day, that was the scenario we came up with that we thought would work the best.
Yeah, and, and I know as a commissioner, our, our job's not to manage, it's to govern, but I, I have a hard time seeing those large slides sitting there from 4 to 7 not being used. I mean, that's a, that is what you drive by, that's what you see, that's what the, the older kids want, so.
Don't disagree, sir, don't disagree.
I, I would, yeah, I don't know how we do, you know, we'll see where we're at. I think we're going to be a lot better place at the end of May. So I'm going to hope that that's open all day, that would be my preference.
Do want to point out that given this model, we do, we do forecast a pretty significant financial loss this year. So we anticipate around $230,000 in revenue, but our operating expenses will still be around $425,000 for an estimated loss of, of around $195,000. So we don't, we want everybody to understand that. This is, be a hard pill for us to swallow because in the past, we've done an excellent job of recovering our direct costs. But this is more, I guess, in line with the model of the traditional swimming pool. So we, we want that to be upfront so everybody's aware of it.
Well, it's, it's hard to put a price on hope and motivation and inspiration, but I, I think if, if the community needs a shot in the arm of those tonics, that might be a small price to.
We're okay with that.
Relatively, relatively small price to.
We just, we just wanted you to be aware of it.
And, and that's why we're bringing it forward is it's, you know, something the community's been asking about. It's something that you, as a governing body, have been asking about. We recognize, you know, it does serve a purpose and, and we were able to finish 2020 favorably. So we'd have the capacity to operate in this model, but we wanted to have the conversation with you early. It's early enough that, that there is, remains uncertainty about where we might be in terms of the health order. And, you know, I remain optimistic in general, but felt like we need to have this conversation at this point rather than wait till opening day to be talking about this.
Where does the, where does the money come from for the subsidization? That could come from Parks and Rec general budget or where does that? What are, what are we taking from in order to fund that?
Essentially, we come out of general fund reserves, which we were able to deposit some funds in in 2020, given our financial measures through COVID. So we essentially would be spending some of that, that revenue or that, that net gain that we realized in 2020. So to recap just a bit, I think we are, we are advertising for lifeguard positions. We're trying to hire at full staffing levels. We remain committed to that. If the opportunity presents itself, our, our intent would be to open it up and operate it as, as fully and as normally as, as possible. The limiting factor, the, the primary limiting factor that this is intended to address is the health order, which we'll have to monitor that and see how it progresses. And then, you know, we've lived through a number of years with staffing challenges. If we can get to full staffing, that'd be great. If we can't, we'll just have to manage that issue similar to what we've done in years past. But I think the, the main purpose for this presentation and this update is to give you a sense of how we thought, what we've seen done in other communities and what we thought the approach might be if we are under a occupancy limitation due to the health order.
How, how much of the businesses walk-up business historically? As opposed to people bought season pass on any given, given day?
We actually have?
Oh, Jeff's got it.
Or put it another way, are, are there 600 pass, you know, season pass folks who are showing up four days a week?
While Chris is looking for that information, I know we had a conversation about just this approach being communicated in such a way that people had a sense of a reservation system and they had a time block versus showing up and then finding out that we're at capacity or that they're not able to get in. So part of the, the value or the rationale behind the reservation process was to kind of clearly communicate in advance that you have a slot or you don't versus just expect people to show up and, and when we hit the number, we start turning people away.
In, in 2019, we had 13,002 visits by pass holders and we had 52,824 for day passes.
And those day passes are almost all but on a walk-up basis?
Yes, sir. I mean, you can, you can come into the, you can come in and you can buy them separately, but yes, sir. In most cases, they're walk-up traffic, foot traffic. Okay, I think the mayor's trying to say something here. We're having, still having audio issues in this side of the stream.
I got you, I got you. I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can hear me, but?
We can hear you now, go ahead.
Great, well, I wanted to recognize Mr. Hammond because he had his hand raised, he, but it sounds like Mr. Cotton got you that information. I did notice in the presentation that it said that, you know, people who had bought season passes would always be accommodated. And I guess I was just a little confused about how that's going to happen if, you know, if we are operating at full capacity know, if we are operating at full capacity and someone with a season pass, you know, wants to join, but that puts us up at whatever, 601 or 610 or whatever, whatever their party would, would be. Have we thought about, I mean, how, how that would work? Or did I misunderstand that whole thing completely?
No, and, and I think it would, it would go back to kind of what we talked about earlier. It'd be as people left and then they would be at the front of the list to come in as the pass holder.
Okay. Okay. Gotcha. And Mr. Skreg, our current mass gathering restrictions, those are, those expire on the 21st. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The, the current restriction is 50% capacity and they expire on the 21st. And Jason Tiller, the help executive, will be at our meeting today to talk about what the future might hold.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would, that has questions? I don't see any of the, any members of the public on the Zoom end, but if there are any members of the public that have questions that are in room 107, invite you to ask those.
We do have some general public, but no one seems to be making a move to the podium. So I don't think we have any public comment on this end.
Okay. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Chris and, and Jeff. I hope you get to feeling better. I'm, I'm sorry that you couldn't be there in person, but thank you very much for, for checking in and thanks for getting the technical glitches fixed. And we will meet back here at 4 o'clock unless there's anything else that we have to cover.
Mayor Hodges and Commissioner Ryan, you might want to stay on the line if we need to do any technical troubleshooting between now and 4, please.
Absolutely. Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.